Welcome to the Orville City Council meeting. Calling this meeting in order where we are just convening from, reconvening from closed session where direction was given and no action was taken. Will you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is Bill LaGrum. Just want to report to you that Vice Mayor Thompson has been in contact with me and he is ill tonight.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Moving on to presentations and proclamations. First item is a proclamation honoring Planning Commissioner Damon Robison. And I'd like to ask Councilmember Hatley to present this proclamation.
Whereas the City of Orville, Council, Planning Commission and all departments of the City of Orville recognize and appreciate our enormous amount of volunteer time that has been given so generously by Damon Robison to serve our community as an Orville Planning Commissioner. And whereas Damon has volunteered for the City of Orville as Planning Commissioner for almost 20 years, leading the commission as chairman for most of them. And whereas Damon served this community as a member of the Planning Commission with distinction as a consistent and dedicated individual demonstrating his willingness to place his concern for the public good above his personal interest. And whereas Damon has displayed through his leadership and guidance a deep concern for his community, including his present, future, well-being. And whereas Damon's knowledge of historical Planning Commission actions, the city municipal code zoning regulations and Rosenberg Rules of Order made him an irreplaceable member of the Planning Commission. Whereas Damon will be missed by many as he starts the next chapter of his life, he will be remembered most of all for dedication to the betterment of Orville and his esteemed leadership. And now therefore I, Chuck Reynolds, Mayor of the City of Orville, in concurrence with the Orville City Council Planning Commission and citizens of our community, hereby recognize Damon Robison for his dedication, generosity, valuable contributions to the Orville community and urge all citizens to join with me in this sincere expression of appreciation for his outstanding service and his side, Chuck Reynolds, Mayor. One thing I'd like to say. Damon was on this board when I was on this council. So we go way back. Plus, we went way back before that, before he was ever on here, when he was just a kid running around here and I was chasing him around. He has always been dedicated to the city. I'm proud to know him. I'm proud to be able to call him my friend.
I just want to thank the people of Orville. Let me represent you as the Planning Commissioner for all these years. And I want to thank the City Council and all the previous City Councils for giving me the opportunity. And just want to say, be good to each other. We disagree, but sometimes if somebody is an ardent opponent on one issue, they will be a staunch ally on another. And just always try to remember that. And times can be tough, but just be good to each other. And I want to thank all you guys for the time that you put into the City Council and for the opportunity that I've had to be on this planning commission for so long. And the only other thing I'd like to add, I don't have any input on who fills my seat. But the one thing I would like to encourage when you fill the seat is as a person, you have the privilege to fill that seat for almost 20 years. But as a straight white male that you consider diversity, that whoever you put in there might not look like me in at least one of those demographics. Perspectives are very important in coming to good decisions.
All right, moving on to item number two, Laura's Law Presentation presented by Butte County Behavioral Health.
And Mr. Mayor, after the presentation, I do have one public speaker for this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Scott Cannelli. I'm the interim director for Butte County Behavioral Health. And I've been asked to come talk about Laura's Law, also known as AOT or Assisted Outpatient Treatment. I have a PowerPoint I can go through, or if you'd like, you can ask me questions, whatever you prefer. Go ahead with the PowerPoint. Okay. So Laura's Law, also known as Assisted Outpatient Treatment, came into development in 2001 after the killing of Laura Wilcox in Nevada County by an individual suffering from severe mental illness. In 2002, the state approved AB 1421, which is called Assisted Outpatient Treatment Demonstration Project Act. And that allowed counties to opt into something called Laura's Law and implement court ordered outpatient mental health treatment. As of this time, 20 counties within the state of California have decided to opt into Laura's Law. AOT is also known as involuntary outpatient treatment and involves petitioning local courts in order for individuals to enter and remain in the treatment within the community for a specific period of time. The coordination of this program requires a lot of collaboration. It's not just behavioral health, it's the courts, it's the DA, it's public defender, patients' rights and a number of other players. The purpose of AOT is to identify individuals in the community who have severe mental illness who are not engaged in treatment. A lot of those people tend to be homeless, tend to be pretty problematic in the community. And our job is to assess those people to determine if they are at high risk for significant deterioration and could benefit from our program. Once a person is identified, a petition to the court is filed in order to implement the services for Laura's Law. And potential outcomes for Laura's Law, depending on the counties that are implementing it, have been reduced psychiatric hospitalizations, reduced criminal justice contacts or people going to jail, reduction in crisis services and a reduction in homelessness. As I mentioned, there's a lot of inter-agency collaboration with behavioral health courts, county council, public defender, district attorney, patients' rights and law enforcement. So Laura's Law is an interesting program because a lot of people feel like everyone who's out on the street who's homeless, who's mentally ill can qualify for Laura's Law. When the reality is only a portion of those people qualify for the very strict criteria for Laura's Law. It starts out pretty open and then it gets very restrictive. The easy ones are you have to be a county resident, 18 years of age or older who's mentally ill. You also have to be unlikely to survive safely in the community without supervision. You have to have a history of a lack of participation or be non-engaged in mental health treatment. The person also has to be considered at risk of substantially deteriorating without this treatment. And participation in Laura's Law has to be considered the least restrictive option available out there for them. They have to have declined all other treatment options like outpatient care, med support services, case management intensive teams that we have available. In addition, this is where it gets challenging, one of the two following criteria needs to be met. The person has to have had at least two psychiatric hospitalizations or have been incarcerated within the last three years. Or that person has to have had behavior that has resulted in significant acts of violence or attempts of violence towards themselves or other people within the last four years. Those two issues tend to be the biggest challenge for people qualifying for Laura's Law. So who can get someone referred for Laura's Law? The first part to request a petition can be done by an adult with whom the person resides, a parent, spouse or sibling or child of that person, as long as they're 18 years of age or older. The director or designee of a mental health treatment provider who's either provided treatment to that person or is currently providing treatment. Or a licensed mental health treatment provider. Or law enforcement, including probation and parole. So a petition can be made and once the request to file a petition is made, county mental health director has to do the following. They have to locate and notify the individual that Laura's Law petition is going to be filed against them and give them the option to voluntarily commit to treatment and say, I'll do it without going through the court process. This is a big part of Laura's Law because it involves an intense amount of outreach and engagement to people in the community. And it's usually a 30 to 90 day process depending on which community or which county implements Laura's Law and what they set. Then the person has to be evaluated to determine if they meet criteria for Laura's Law. And within 10 days of the assessment, a written petition has to be prepared for the Superior Court, a clinical assessment and a treatment plan with recommendations and justifications for Laura's Law has to be presented to the court. So if the individual refuses an evaluation, which does happen, the court has the ability to request that they be hospitalized for up to 72 hours to have the evaluation done in an inpatient facility. The biggest challenge in this part of Laura's Law is a lot of these people are homeless and hard to find. So chasing down people who might have been recommended, who might be very qualified, often counties find that they can't find a number of people who get referred. Question?
Can you go back to that?
Sure.
So as I'm looking at this, what I find that could be quite challenging is the first evaluation, locate and notify. Once you've located that individual, they would have to voluntarily engage. But what you're talking about is a component of the culture that because whatever the deficiency is, it has increased the instability in their mental prowess and their ability to make, you know, decisions such as that. And especially if they are adverse to medication management.
You're correct. And another term for that is anosognosia, which is the lack of insight into your mental health condition. A number of our population do not really believe that they're mentally ill. They believe they're fine. And why would you put me in treatment and why would I take those medications? So a big component of Laura's Law is a specific training protocol called Assertive Community Treatment where teams are specially trained to engage non-engaged people. And that's a big focus so they get very highly trained on how to work with resistant people who otherwise have failed to engage voluntarily.
All right.
Okay. Just want to see where I left off. Okay, next page. So petition filing the Superior Court hearing. Upon the receipt of the petition, the court must set a hearing within five days. And at that time, the individual has the right to counsel throughout the process to support them and let them know what their rights are. And if the petition is upheld, the court may order the individual into AOT or Assisted Outpatient Treatment. AOT can be ordered for periods of up to 180 days or six months at a time. However, the mental health director must file an affidavit every two months, at which time the person can contest the court and say, I don't really think I need this or I'm falling through, I really don't need to be court ordered. And then after six months, another petition can be filed if AOT is recommended to be continued. And again, that's based on documentation of how the client is participating in treatment, whether or not they're taking the medication, following through on appointments. So getting to the nuts and bolts of what Laura's Law is, it is treatment on steroids. It's a highly trained team with a very low caseload that specializes in very difficult to engage clients. It has a, it's a community-based, mobile, multidisciplinary team that's usually a therapist, a counselor, a peer mentor and a doctor and a nurse, at least parts of those, depending on how many people on that caseload. They are available 24 hours, seven days a week on call. So it's not like an eight to five team. The staff ratio is one staff to 10 clients as opposed to typical outpatient, one staff to 40 clients. Implementing this is, implementing Laura's Law, there are some additional pieces that make it really robust in the sense that they have a significant funding for housing, for both immediate housing, transitional housing and long-term housing, depending on where the client is. They also have incentives or tokens of encouragement, things to reinforce people coming through, following through with their treatment. Could be gift cards, could be food vouchers, could be things like that. And they have a lot of family support and consultation that they provide to family members that might have individuals who are in the Laura's Law program. But one thing about Laura's Law that is often misunderstood is even though the court can order medication, treatment or the client to take medication, there's absolutely no authority to enforce that. So people talk about the black robe effect where someone gets in front of a judge and the judge says, you shall take medication or else. And there is a portion of clients that will be like, I want to please the judge, I just don't want to be here every week, I'll take the meds. But there's also a portion of those clients that say, no, not going to do it. And that's one of the frustrating parts of Laura's Law, you cannot force medication. But the teams that continue to work with these clients, try and work with them and educate them and encourage them to do this, part of that is that luck, the times you have been on medication, you don't seem to have as many law enforcement encounters or you haven't been hospitalized when you're on those medications. Maybe we should try this again. It's all about the relationship and working with the doctor as well. So as far as effectiveness of Laura's Law, as I mentioned, 20 counties are engaged in implementing it. However, only 10 counties have any real outcome data on the effectiveness of Laura's Law. One of the challenges with the implementation of it is the data requirement elements are not consistent or enforced from county to county, so you can't compare apples to apples. Some counties report great outcome data for Laura's Law for people who actually get into court and are court ordered and they count those as being in the program. Some count those that are engaged in services and then voluntarily accept services as being engaged in treatment. So it's a little bit all over the board as well as the utilization rates. We looked at all the counties that implemented Laura's Law and they range, the people who were ultimately eligible for Laura's Law ranged from .3 to 7.1 per 100,000 people. So Butte County is estimating about five people per 100,000 would qualify for this intense program. So a little bit over 10, 11, 12 clients for our total population could potentially be the appropriate candidates and be treated in this program. This program, as I mentioned, has a lot of cost reductions with regard to incarceration, hospitalization, law enforcement contacts, but it's a very expensive program to run. The housing costs, the court costs, the county council costs, DA costs, things like that. County behavioral health systems can fund the treatment component, but we cannot fund any of the court costs, DA, things like that. So if the county is to implement Laura's Law, they have to find funding for those staff, either through county general fund or some special means of funding. So that's why Laura's Law, when it's something the board of supervisors votes to bring in or not, they have to consider that. And that was something that was weighed and considered back in 2017 and was not approved at the time. So funding for Laura's Law, if we were to fund Laura's Law ourselves as behavioral health, our piece of funding would be through either Mental Health Services Act funding or realignment funding, which are two of our biggest funding sources. Much of Laura's Law, unfortunately, right now, you cannot get reimbursed for Medi-Cal for, which is our primary source of reimbursement. It's about engaging people in the community who aren't in services. So all of those outreach services are unreimbursable. The state right now is looking at potentially reforming Medi-Cal and that might change with some of the waiver reform that's happening. And I can get into that detail if you'd like to know. But one of the statutes for Laura's Law is MHSA funds cannot be utilized to implement or operate Laura's Law for the cost of other partner agencies such as the courts, public defender, county council, et cetera. And that no other programs may be reduced or eliminated to fund AOT. So there's only one exception to that, and that is our MHSA funds, if the community says, we want Laura's Law and we don't care, we'll eliminate other programs to do it. If enough of the community supports it, we can potentially discontinue some other services that are funded under MHSA to bring on Laura's Law. That in itself can be controversial because some of those programs we operate now are very effective and helpful for community members. So with that in mind, the county a couple of months ago saw a grant that came out from SAMSA for the implementation of assisted outpatient treatment and decided to pursue it after discussing it with our community partners and saying, this is something we want to try. If Laura's Law truly is as effective as they say it is, you could see cost savings on your hospitalizations, on your law enforcement impacts and crisis services, and you can shift those cost savings perhaps to fund Laura's Law. So the grant that we're seeking right now is a highly competitive grant. It's nationwide. There's only 14 awards that are going to be given. It's for $1 million for four years. So you're talking about a team that is costing $1 million for four years, each year, $1 million each year. And that would cover all the costs, including the ones I said are not covered by behavioral health right now. And that would be an intensive outreach and engagement team with a very low caseload. So some other considerations, I'm almost done, is the benefits of Laura's Law, it allows family members and others to petition courts for treatment where currently there's no other means for that to happen. It gives them a voice. It improves engagement and compliance with treatment. As I mentioned, a number of clients that are referred to Laura's Law end up voluntarily accepting services. And so that's a good outcome. If you get significant engagement, they might actually voluntarily consent. Provides funding for housing and reduce incarcerations, hospitalizations and emergency visits, as I mentioned. You also have a highly trained team that specializes in non-engaged, difficult to treat clients. Some of the limitations, and I mentioned this before, it really lacks a mechanism for enforcement. If a client doesn't consent, apart from sending them to the hospital, if they meet specific criteria, they don't consent and they are still going to be out there. And there are those clients that we, counties have failed to engage no matter what they throw at them and how much support they offer. You cannot compel med compliance except in a hospital setting with a court order. It's a very staff-intensive program. There's a lot of training required, significant agency, interagency collaboration, coordination and the extensive reporting to the state and local government. The county along the last couple of years has implemented a number of programs that mimic parts of Laura's Law that I just want to highlight because we do do a lot of what Laura's Law does, just not the complete package. We have a mobile crisis team in both Chico and Orville that partners with law enforcement and goes out on crises to try and help reduce amount of people being hospitalized and divert them into alternative treatments or mental health services. We also have a community outreach team, also called the homeless outreach team, that have dedicated staff that go out to the homeless camps to try and engage people who we know are substance using or mental health consumers who are not in treatment. We recently started last July a mental health diversion court in our courts here to allow people who've been arrested for illegal actions that are related to their mental health, perhaps offering while they're delusional or psychotic or manic, to engage in treatment through a court order as an alternative to going to jail. And we've had a number of clients go through that successfully. And then we have our full-service partnerships, which are called our search teams, which are teams that are for the highest, most severely mentally ill clients that follow those clients and provide housing and treatment and see them multiple times in a week. So those are the services we have in place that are like Laura's Law, but not quite Laura's Law. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Councilmember Goodson.
So it's my understanding that you have a 24/7 mobile unit. I would, I would think that over, you know, a certain period that, let me back up, is there a case manager on this mobile unit team?
On the Laura's Law unit or on the search team? What, they were both, yes, we have a case manager on our search teams.
There is a case manager. So if a case manager interacts on a continual basis with one to five specific individuals on a weekly basis, would, and if it's been documented, then why would, why would there not be eligibility from Medi-Cal? Because it's my understanding that in order to bill medically, you would need documentation and a treatment plan and goals and objectives.
Right. So currently, the way Medi-Cal is set up, in order to bill Medi-Cal for mental health services, the client has to consent to treatment. They have to sign a consent saying I'm volunteering to treatment, they have to sign the appropriate paperwork. And that's the problem with many of these people, they're not willing to sign. So without a signed consent and a completed assessment and a treatment plan, the state does not allow it.
So even though they're seen on a continual basis, that's the crux of, that's the challenge right there. Nobody wants to sign on the dotted line.
No. And a lot of these people are mistrustful of behavioral health and the county systems and they've been burned by various entities, so they see us as not necessarily supportive. But California is undergoing a significant change right now. It was called CAL-AIM, California Advancing and Innovating Medi-Cal. It's just recently been changed to Medi-Cal Healthier California for All. And there's work groups happening that are talking about, how do we draw down Medi-Cal reimbursement for engagement? We recognize that. And we put that date to the state and the state is now asking the federal governments to allow a waiver to bill for that, even if the person's not open into services. So much of this unbillable time can potentially be billable. And even if we don't build Laura's Law team, we could build a team that mimicked it that was able to be reimbursed. Because much of county mental health services are, require federal financial participation funding for Medi-Cal to come down for us to be robust. But we do have programs like our homeless outreach teams that don't generate any revenue, but we know are important enough to bring people in that we, that we fund.
Thank you, Scott.
Councilmember Pittman.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your details. The grant that you're looking for, what agency are you looking for that from?
SAMSA. It's a federal government grant.
SAMSA. And the funding you're looking at is about $4 million?
It's $4 million, $1 million a year for four years.
And all the activities would be handled by the county of Butte Behavioral Health Services?
So Butte, if they got that grant, has the opportunity to hire the team themselves or they could contract and hire and have someone else provide the team, yes. Depending on the county, it's been done both ways.
How can the City of Orville help you?
Right now with the grant, there's nothing you can do. We have the letters of support, the grant is in motion. We've done what we needed to do and we had great support from our, our community partners to get that moving.
Would you suppose any facilities might be necessary for conducting these activities after you receive the grant?
Obviously, post campfire, we have very few housing resources. And right now, one of my jobs as the interim director is trying to bring in more housing resources. These people coming off the streets aren't typically people going to apartments and live independently. They usually need required, supportive assistance like a board and care, a sober living environment, residential treatment or some assisted living facilities. So we're, we are, even if we weren't going for Laura's Law, our goal is to increase our housing stock for our clients because a lot of that was lost in the campfire.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, just a comment and a question. You said there's no compulsory component to this program. And then, you know, in reviewing of the triggers, so you had to have incarceration, I think, two times within three years or be admitted twice under a mental health situation. And so just kind of digesting that, considering the criminal justice, when they're incarcerated, then as I think you kind of alluded to, that there's more that can perhaps be done for that individual under that. So essentially what we're doing here is giving voice, if I'm hearing you correctly, to family who feel probably frustrated, maybe as an intervention, inventive piece, but you know, kind of long-term, kind of maybe just briefly after four years, you know, and then also kind of results. Are you kind of using, thinking in terms of leveraging, perhaps engaging more, I mean, kind of like, you know, just listening to you, it almost sounds like it's a good thing, but not really.
It's a good thing and I would welcome it as part of our continuum of care because it's, it's a, it's a certain level of engagement with resources that I would love to have for my, all my teams. It's a, it's a very rich program. One of the most expensive things I have as a county director is my inpatient hospitalization costs. They average $1,200 a day. So if I can reduce those dramatically and help people get into treatment and help them reduce the trauma of being hospitalized, some of those savings could be put back into a program such as Laura's Law. So that's what that four-year period would have, would be looking at. Reduce crisis contacts, which costs a lot of money. Reduced emergency room visits, which cost, emergency rooms quite a bit of money and cause a lot of frustration and more stability of our clients. And actually, when they survey clients who've been in this, in this program, beginning, middle and end, most of them say, you know, I recognize my life's a better place. and end, most of them say, you know, I recognize my life's a better place now. Most of them are taking medication, most of them are in a better place. And yes, it does give a voice to families and it does allow them to have another tool to get people out of the revolving system of care, where people go to the emergency rooms, they go to jail, they go to hospitals, and then they get back on the street. But the part it really is not going to address is someone who's mentally ill, wandering the streets, who's delusional, who's not been hospitalized, who's not engaged with their family, but is perfectly happy doing what they're doing, using drugs or just wandering the streets. And that's the piece where I think people misunderstand Laura's Law, it's like, we can get those people and bring them into treatment. No, they have to have been violent to themselves or others, or we've had to have been able to, they've hit a threshold where they've been hospitalized a number of times or been incarcerated. That's that special population that it's set for.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott.
Okay.
Appreciate your presentation.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
You do have one speaker on this item.
Yes, I have George Deeds.
Hi, everybody. I'm pretty happy because they saved me a lot of work. So I'm George Deeds with National Alliance of Mental Illness here in Chico. And two years ago, we went to the board of supervisors over here, and I pretty much told them that we're going to do Laura's Law. So last year, I was at almost every one of the city councils over there in Chico. And it took a year, but we got our letter of support because this is what it's about. We need to get our community members and our community leaders to go to the board of supervisors with a letter of support to help families like mine. Okay? Because there's a lot of us. You know, they talk about this money thing, but they don't talk about this other money thing. The money thing that people like me, our hands are tied. Because, you know, behavioral health does their best. There's got to be a place to where they go and get initial. But when they come out, like my kid, she's got to think about not taking pills. She don't like those guys. I'm one of those families, and we have the resources, we have the money, and her hands are tied. I go to behavioral health trying to get her pills? Sorry, you got to make an appointment. Knowing full well, everything's there, she's going to flip out. Thank God we learned about emergency. But there's a lot of families that they don't know when it's going to happen. You ever see your loved one go crazy? Somebody had hopes, aspirations, and dreams, and all of a sudden, next day, they're gone, and they're doing this stuff? You know, it's a reality. You know, I know. Also, at NAMI, I do all the booths at the fairs, and I have families saying, hey, can you support us? Can you support us? Yeah, I called the cops. They didn't help us. You know, we aren't getting the help. You know, I'm from Chico. Not much about Oroville, but I do know this, that Laura's Law, AKA Laura's Law, does this. We're the front line. I don't need my daughter out here on the streets, you know? And if we're on the front line...
Thank you. Excuse me, sir. Your time's up, but thank you very much. Appreciate it.
But I need to tell you one more thing. And what it is, is that they're going to go here, and they're going to make Laura's Law all across California. So that's the thing, but it's going to have to be... Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number three. New Oroville fire employees will be introduced, and we will administer the oath of office
Good evening. Welcome. Thank you, everybody, for coming. My name's Joe Deehl. I'm police and fire chief for the City of Oroville. It's a pretty exciting time in Oroville right now, specifically at the Public Safety Department. We've been able to hire a number of new employees. Tonight, we're going to recognize the four employees that are sitting in the front row here. They're the most recently hired fire employees we have. I'm going to start by asking my deputy fire chief, Chris Tens, to come up here. And we've got a long agenda. A lot of people are here for a lot of things. We're going to make it really quick. He's going to introduce each one of these employees before the mayor comes out and gives them their oath of office.
Kind of standing the wrong way here, but good evening, mayor, council. Chris Tens, deputy fire chief. I have the privilege tonight to introduce four new members that were brought on by the SAFER Grant. We're really excited. But when you guys come up, please come up, stand up, and the mayor will come and read you the oath of office when I call your names. So first is Brad Larson. He came to us a few months ago. He was hired on a little bit before. He had some experience, a season or two with CAL FIRE. The next is Brad Long. Two Brads. Brad Long is coming over as a lateral. He had multiple years with Colusa Fire. And then Scott Margolin. Scott Margolin's coming over from, he came from El Medea with multiple years of experience as well. And then Dallin Hutter is coming to Oroville. He came with a little bit of experience from Nevada City.
All right. Well, this is pretty exciting because this is one of our big goals. I think that we all can relate and get behind our safety first responders, and this is a big deal for us. This, to me, represents progress, strength, safety, all of these things. Every one of us, at one time or another, will either need the services of a first responder or will know somebody who does. And we are really happy when they show up, and I'm really excited to welcome them to our fire department for the City of Oroville. So this is our oath or affirmation of allegiance, and this is given to all elected officials, appointed officials, and public employees. It's under the State of California, the County of Butte, and the City of Oroville. This execution of oath is required by Article 20, Section 3 of the Constitution of the State of California. Can I get you to raise your right hands, please? I state your name.
Brad Long.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
The Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies
Against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
that I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
and that I will well and faithfully
That I will well and faithfully.
discharge the duties upon
Discharge the duties upon.
which I am about to enter
Which I am about to enter.
for the City of Oroville.
For the City of Oroville.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
First responders and not last responders. Thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
So along with this, we do ceremonial badge pinning. They'll each have their badge pinned on them. This will be another good moment for photos. If any family members, friends are here that want to do that, we do those one at a time, and they get to pick who pins that badge on them. So we're going to start with firefighter Larson. Who's doing the pinning? He's asking for his wife, Taylor, to come up. So as we do these, if you want to take photos, you're more than welcome to come up closer by all means. Next, we're going to do Mr. Long. He's asking for Rick to come forward.
My girlfriend, Taylor.
Just in closing, thank you to the council, thank you to the new members, and we'll get to work. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we're moving on to our public communications portion of our meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a few speakers. Our first speaker is Ron Legata.
Mr. Mayor, city council, my name is Ron Legata. My wife and I, Luanne. Not really known to need a microphone, but my wife and I, Luanne, moved to this area 17 years ago. But it wasn't until June of 2019 that we purchased a home in the city limits. We are very proud to own a home on Elgin, which is, if you're going north on Lincoln, the west side. Very clear, it's the west side. And we're very thankful to be in the city. I just spoke to a leadership group of people last Friday and was talking about Oroville and how I've been blessed to live in probably seven metropolitan areas. Never, real, I love the people, but I never loved the area. But when Luanne and I moved here, both of us love Oroville. We're thankful for this great city. We believe that, from our faith perspective, that God has very special plans for this city, and you as leaders hold a very key to God's plan in fulfilling that. And so we want to say thank you. Thank you to all the staff of the City of Oroville. I've had a chance to work with a few. Thank you. Thank you for dedicating your lives and doing what you do to make this city a great place to live. Many things have been said about Oroville in the past, some very positive, some maybe not so positive. All I can say is, I personally believe Oroville's greatest years are ahead, and thank you for all that you do to make that happen.
The cameraman, and then Bill Spear.
Good evening, Oroville City Council. First, I'd just like to say I wasn't here last meeting. I know there were some important agenda items, but due to a manufacturer's defect in an engine, I couldn't be here. But I, it really is disappointing because I went around to all the tobacco shops and got their word, and of course, when it came time to come to the meeting, we had that, I had that problem, and I was unable to attend, so I do apologize for the few people I got to speak to that I was going to comment on their behalf. But, you know, things in life don't make sense, manufacturer errors and things of that nature. I'd also like to comment on MLK Park. I don't know if any of you are aware. Majority, I know Mrs. Goodson is aware. I saw her interview on Action News last night, but some people, with no disregard to other people's use for the park, decided to take their vehicles and destroy the grass, which caused $75,000 worth of damage. And if insurance doesn't cover it, that's going to apparently come out of the general fund, so really hope insurance covers that. And on a side note, the, right next to the airport, there's the clay pits, and that's perfect for that activity. I guess somebody just didn't want to use the gas or is just lazy and didn't want to go down there, but that's what that area is for, so just a heads up so you don't destroy any future parks. But hopefully, those people will be held accountable. And for our fire swearing-in, good to see we have some new firefighters, and interesting to see that they take the oath to defend the Constitution as well. So I hope that they understand that when I film them, they uphold my First Amendment right to freedom of the press, so I don't want to see any shining of the lights and using prior restraint to obstruct my First Amendment. And finally, just on a side note, with 10 seconds remaining, right outside the door there, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but the speaker panel for the cover, it has come undone, so somebody needs to get a ladder and fix that. Thank you. Good night.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just speak to one small item that was brought up. It was regarding the Martin Luther King Park damage. I just want to make it really clear, it was a little bit misleading in the news and in the paper, that that money will be coming from the general fund. That is not the City of Oroville's general fund. That it will be coming from Feather River Parks and Recreation District. It's their park. So I just wanted to be really clear on that. That is within the city boundaries, but it is not our park.
Our last public speaker for this item is Bill Spear.
Mr. Mayor, city council. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For yours is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. So I was watching the Senate and the trial, and I was really impressed with the chaplain they have there, who would start out the service by praying. Every time they open, they have their chaplain, and he prays for wisdom for the senators. And, you know, I don't know what's going on over in the House, but from what I was watching, it seemed to work pretty good. I know back in our founding of our great nation, it was a pretty common thing. I would like to see Oroville have a chaplain and... And I believe that it's because of prayer that has turned our city around, that has given us wisdom, that is moving us forward. And, and I would volunteer and do it for nothing. And I'm sure there's a lot of other pastors that would volunteer to be the chaplain of Oroville, wouldn't cost the city anything. And we could get back to the foundation and open up our city council meetings right, asking for God's wisdom, for God's favor, for God's guidance, for God's mercy, and God's grace. Just a bright spot of watching the Senate trial. And I was thinking, man, we should do that in our community.
Are there any more speakers?
There are no more speakers on this item.
Looking for a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, there are, I do have a speaker on item three and five for the consent calendar.
Okay.
The cameraman.
Starting with number three, right. For item number three, I'd just like to quickly comment on there. I think this is an interesting idea. I would like to see it pan out, the city sponsorship and the Experimental Aircraft Association. I've never seen an experimental aircraft. It sounds like a fun event. I like planes. I don't see really any problem with this event. Seems like a good idea. I mean, aircraft are dangerous. I mean, but, I mean, you're more likely to be hurting an automobile accident than a plane. But, I mean, I don't see a problem with this. I think it's a great idea.
And then item number five as well.
Good evening again. My comments regarding number five here, accepting of community donations and authorization to purchase canine and associated training. I'm for the canine training. You know, unless you train it, it's not going to know what to do. But I would like to see some more use of the Oroville canines, particularly in our city schools. I'm not really for policing in schools. It's a learning environment, not, you know, it's a very thin line between, you know, some people's view as a, as a prison or an education facility. But that's my personal opinion. But I've been doing some digging at Oroville Prospect High School into their use of canines for random searches as part of their policy. And the Butte County Sheriff's Department handles the searches at the high school. And I spoke to a Sergeant Diamato, if I pronounced that correctly. And he told me that the sheriff's department handles the school resource deputy, you know, or school resource officer duties for all unincorporated county schools. Well, I went to the city hall, and Oroville Prospect High School is in the city of Oroville. So I think we should start using, you know, our city resources on city property. Because there are both in agreement with the sheriff's department and the city of Oroville for that high school. I have made public records requests into that matter. But I'd probably rather see our resources using on, you know, city property rather than having the county come in and do their resources. But I do not really agree with the Oroville Prospect High School policy. Because when you look into it, really, particularly the canine section, it really just gambles on the fact whether or not the student has actually read the policy.
Mr. Mayor, that's the last of the speakers for the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar as written.
I'll second that.
Motion carries.
All right, this time, we're going to open this meeting up to public hearing. We have one item in public hearing. Item number seven, second public hearing to receive input regarding transition to by-district elections for council members.
Trying to figure out the best place to stand here, and apologies to...
Probably turn around to the front.
Oh, okay, sounds good. Thank you. And there's also information that's really for members of the public, so I'll do my best to sort of pivot as possible. Hi, everyone, my name is Jamie. I am one of the consultants that's working with the city of Oroville to transition from by-district election, or excuse me, at-large elections to by-district elections. This is just a really brief summary of the process the city of Oroville is going through, and some information on how all of you can participate in this process. Is there a certain direction?
There's a button on the side.
Yes.
It should be, oh, it's probably, hold on. It's because she gave it to you without plugging this into yours.
Pardon me.
It's, she didn't have the base plugged into her computer. Now it should work.
Perfect. Thank you. So a brief introduction. Cities throughout California have been transitioning from at-large elections to by-district elections as prompted by the 2001 California Voting Rights Act. So this process is not unique to the city of Oroville. And also, the city of Oroville is certainly not the smallest jurisdiction or city to have gone through this process. So essentially, this process is, currently, all of you elect your members of city council through at-large elections. So everybody votes on all of the city council members, and the city council members who receive the most votes are elected to city council. In this process, Oroville is moving from at-large elections to by-district elections in which there will be districts drawn throughout Oroville. And anybody who wishes to run for city council can run for city council in the district that they live in, and they will represent the people who also live in their districts. In November 2019, Oroville, please excuse me, city council received what's called a demand letter, which asserted that there was a violation under the California Voting Rights Act. In November 2019, the city council adopted a resolution of intent to move from at-large to by-district elections. And under California law, this process of moving from at-large to by-district elections must be completed within 90 days. So how this process will work, there will be two city council hearings to gather input from the community. There, there was an initial meeting on January 21st, and then this meeting today. The purpose of this meeting is also to solicit your input on the districts, the future districts. So this input is going to help to shape the districts and will be used to inform the drafts when the draft maps are created. After this meeting, we'll use all of the public input that's been received to create draft maps. Those draft maps will be available by February 18th. And those will be available for comment online and elsewhere. Perhaps there'll be a paper version posted at the front of city hall, for example. And the city council would still like to receive your feedback on the draft maps and where the districts should be and what they should look like after the draft maps are created. After, after the draft maps, again, there will be two city council hearings to gather feedback. Those will be on March 3rd and March 17th. And the council will have an opportunity to make adjustments to the draft maps on those dates. And then there, finally, will be the ordinance to adopt the draft maps and to move to district elections will be finalized with a vote on the ordinance. And throughout this entire process, again, the city council is looking for your input. You'll be able to provide input here at this hearing today. Also, you can mail in your input or drop it off in person at city hall. Or you will also be able to email your input in, if you would like to work from home. So when and where are the hearings? All of the hearings are here. Again, there previously was a hearing, there's today's hearing, and then after the release of the draft maps on March 3rd and March 17th, the hearings will be here in this room. And a fifth hearing date to vote on the ordinance will be announced soon. The date of that hearing will be announced soon. So the council is going through the process of drawing these districts. And there are certain criteria that they need to follow when they're creating the districts. The first criterion is equal population. So the city council will be creating six districts throughout Oroville, and each of them need to have roughly 3,121 people in it. So they can't draw one district that has 10 people in it and another district that has 10,000 people in it. Each of them need to have about 3,121 people per district. The second criterion is compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act, which prohibits denial of voting rights based on race or ethnicity. Not going to get into that one a ton because this is a quick, quick presentation. The next mapping criteria is continuity. So that means that each district needs to be in one piece altogether. So you can't have a district that half of the district is out by the airport, and the other half of the district is on the very east end of town, and all the other districts are in between. They need to be all together in one piece. The next mapping criterion is compactness. So this means that, when possible, the council should draw districts that are sort of, instead of looking like an octopus, like this, they look like two fists together, when possible. Sometimes, of course, there are really good reasons that that might not be the case. We'll see a map of Oroville, and the city, the boundaries of the city of Oroville aren't necessarily super compact. So there will be some, will be some districts that don't look like a square, for example. And finally, their final mapping criterion will be respect for something called communities of interest, which is really the input that the council is asking for from you all today. So what is a community of interest? The term "community of interest" generally refers to a contiguous population which shares common social or economic interests. So again, contiguous means all together in one piece. So could be, for example, a neighborhood that you live in, or something like that. Communities of interest are usually smaller than districts. They can be used as building blocks of districts. So there can be multiple communities of interest in each district. And they can be, you know, just a couple of city blocks big, or they can be larger than that as well. There is no way for us to find out what the communities of interest in Oroville are except through public participation in this process. So I'm, I'm sure that the city council members have ideas sort of of where general neighborhoods, for example, are in, in Oroville. And that might be different than what you consider to be your neighborhood or what you consider to be your individual community of interest. So that's why they're asking for this public input from all of you. And there's no limitation to what can define your community of interest. So it's up to you to say where your community is and why it's a community of interest. And anybody who lives or works in Oroville can participate in this process. So... Yes?
Anyone who lives or works in Oroville?
Mm-hmm.
We have a lot of people.
Yeah, so that's something that you can weigh when people provide input to you, is you might decide that you want to put more weight with, for example, people who live there than people who work here. And, you know, maybe there's somebody who works in some sort of social services who has an idea of a community, and they feel like they know Oroville pretty well, then that could be information for you as well. It's a really good question. Yeah.
Excuse me. They care enough for input for districting, they don't care about the revenue.
Again, up to, up to you to decide how to weigh the communities of interest. Yeah. So common interests, for example, of what could define a community of interest, could be economic interests, for example. Everybody in my neighborhood works for the same company, and we, you know, we work for the same employer, and we all want to be together in a district. It could, a common goal, economic goal, could be upcoming development. Perhaps your backyard is butts up against a large open space area, and there's talk about a potential development coming in. You either want to make sure that the development goes in a way that isn't going to disrupt your way of life, or maybe you and your neighbors are working together to keep that open area an open, an open space area. Social interest could be a shared culture. It could be neighbors who are working on making their road or the area that they live in a little bit more fire safe. Maybe everyone's getting together to do fuel reduction in their neighborhood. It could be a, a neighborhood that is near a school, and a lot of the kids who go to the school walk to school. And the people who live in that neighborhood think it would be safer for their kids to cross the road to get to school if there was a stoplight instead of a stop sign, for example. So all of these are reasons that potentially you would want to be together with your neighbors or your community in a district. And again, communities of interest are often thought of sort of as neighborhoods. So how can you document your community of interest so that the city council knows where your community of interest is? You can think about what bonds your community. So why is it a community of interest? What is the same inside your community but is different outside of your community, for example? What is your goal or your commonality of the people in your neighborhood? And most, very importantly, where is your community of interest located on a map? So you can either create a map using Google Maps. There's handouts in the back that can show instructions as to how to do that. You can just write down the boundaries. For example, Lincoln and Montgomery to this street to this street, wherever your neighborhood is. And there are forms, again, in the back that ask these questions and really sort of guide, can guide you through filling out these, answering these questions, responding. So why would someone in Oroville want to participate in this process? Well, to make sure that the city council knows where their community of interest is, so that your community of interest is not unintentionally split into two different districts during the, during the districting process. And to give your community a voice and make sure it has access to the political process. To encourage eligible citizens to register and vote, and to encourage all residents to remain politically engaged, and to help shape a districting plan that provides your community a meaningful opportunity to elect a candidate who will represent your interests. Where you can learn more, there is a website, cityoforoville.org/districting. On that website, there's an interactive map where you can find out exactly where the boundaries of the city of Oroville are. You can zoom in and see sort of how many people live in which areas of Oroville. There are a lot of handouts that, again, are available over here. And they're all available online as well. There's more information about communities of interest. There's a form that you can print to fill out and submit to the city council about what your community of interest is, frequently asked questions, a participation map, which we'll get to in a second in this presentation, and more. There's a lot of handouts up there on the website. So here, again, the participation map, this handout is in the very back. This, this map shows the different areas, some different areas in Oroville, and how many people live in each district. So if you would like to give feedback as to exactly what you think the boundaries of the district should look like, then you can look at these places, look at these areas, and add all the numbers together. Use a thick marker or pen to sort of draw a line around where you would like the districts to go, and then submit that information to the city council. to go and then submit that information to the city council. If you submit your community of interest or your full map by Valentine's Day, February 14th, then, um, that, all of that information can be considered when the draft maps are being created. And for more information about how to do all of this is on that handout. It's written on the participation map.
We have a, excuse me, a council member that has a question. Councilmember Draper.
Oh, could you put it, yeah, you're on the participation map, right? And if you'll notice, these two areas out in Thermalito, the population total is only 435, but it's not contiguous to anything. What do you do in a situation like that?
It's a great question. Um, so it actually is contiguous through 162. The, technically, the, um, city of Oroville, it's like 162 is part of the city. So it can connect that way. If you look, I, it's going to be a little hard to point to, but there actually is one little census block that is not contiguous in the city of Oroville. And the best way to handle that will just be to put that one census block with the district that's closest to it. So instead of putting it, you know, somewhere on the way other end of town, just, yeah, just the one that's right there next to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pittman.
Yeah. Now that the map's up, I do have a quick question for you while we have it up here. And I did draw my, uh, draft map and send it to your, I don't know if you received it yet or not.
Not yet.
Um, in the center, um, it says 750. It's a kind of a light brown census tract.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there, there's a roadway that goes right through the middle of that. And from my numbers, it'd be advantageous to split that a number. How, the census tracts, I realize you put, or census blocks. Is it possible to set, cut these census blocks up?
Yes, great question. So these are census block groups. They're made up of a number of census blocks, individual census blocks, which we don't want to split. But the census block groups, we will be able to split. I didn't put the block by block totals because the numbers would be too tiny and it wouldn't be meaningful for any of us to use it. But yes, any of these block groups, um, you'll be able to split, um, where the census blocks lie.
And the other question I had is out by the airport with, which 64 and 371. Those numbers can't be accurate to today's value. These must be 2010 values.
Yes, so when we create the districts, um, we use the most recent census count, which was the 2010 census. That's just the law of which numbers you have to use, yeah.
And maybe you can't answer this question. I'm going to ask it, probably the attorney's going to get the brunt of this. But I look at this as a state mandate that we didn't want. And as this unfunded state mandate, do we qualify for funding to pay for this? I'm sure you don't know the answer.
I might have a guess.
And to answer that, we're going to have to look into that question. I don't know off the top of my head if we do.
Okay. And you see my point because the taxpayers of Oroville didn't ask for this. And there isn't one person that I've talked to that has communicated with me that want this at all. And so it's kind of a hostile takeover by the state of California. And I appreciate your presentation and please don't take this wrong. I'm just.
Not at all.
I'm dealing with, uh, this issue and my constituents certainly don't approve of this. In fact, I've had people seek me out and say, "No." Well, I appreciate that. So I'll be looking at every avenue. And I look at it as a state mandate. It's unfunded. I mean, here we're going to probably spend $80,000 this year and then with the new census next year, got to spend it all over again.
Yeah.
And that's another question. I, can we delay until the 2020 census?
No, we can't.
Okay. I, I knew the answer, I just wanted to ask it. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. And I think you're certainly not alone as a body who's like, "We didn't ask for this. We don't want to do this. Why do we have to do this?" And, yeah, not an enviable position. And given the circumstances, we can just draw the best possible districts for city of Oroville.
Well, and my comment would be too, that it's very difficult in Oroville as I tried to do my attempt at it, to try to either capture a geographic, like the river, uh, a freeway, major roadway. Essentially, those are the communities of interest in the community. And the, of the, uh, what do you want to call it? The, the octopus shape of Oroville, it's really hard to do. And I don't envision you, uh, or us, the challenge to actually select a map that looks and works. And, uh, I see the worst thing is I, I mean, I just start cutting things up. It's like, "Oh, man, how are people going to know what, you know, they're going to wave at their neighbor across the street. Hi, I get to vote for somebody else. You go vote for somebody else." The other part of that question is, is when you have the election, do you restrict the advertisement of the people electing to the district? Or do you have it at large? In other words, signs?
When you're campaigning?
Yes.
Well, I, I would say that somebody who's running for city council could campaign anywhere in the city that they chose to and they might choose to direct their funds towards the areas that would be electing them.
But there's no part of the law that indicates we have to do that.
That would be a local ordinance that I think you would have control over that if you wanted to limit it down to a restricted area. I think regardless of the, uh, content of this, that our citizens do move all over town, so it would be advantageous to, you know, have signs everywhere.
I appreciate that. I don't want to be like, I don't want to ask any more questions. They're just, it's going to be a long process. Thank you.
Councilmember Draper has a question.
Well, I was just going to segue off what he was saying. And from my way of looking at it, as someone who campaigned at large last time, uh, I think it's going to save a lot of money for candidates who are running if they just advertise in their area. And really, it's a waste of money to put them all over town, you know? But I, I just thought that was interesting to mention.
All right. How the public can get involved in this process to participate? You can submit your testimony or your input here today. Again, you can write in to the city council and send whatever information you would like to, to the city in regards to the Oroville districting. Please provide information about your community of interest, um, just general information about where you think the district should go or anything else that, um, you would like to convey to the city as soon as possible. The final deadline for comments to be considered for the draft maps again is February 14th, 2020, so that's Valentine's Day. And, um, you can continue to provide feedback after that. But for your community to be considered for the draft maps, then please, again, submit by, um, February 14th.
Councilmember Smith would like to speak.
So, um, I don't want to get lost in the weeds in this question. Try to simplify it as much as possible. So 2020 this year, we're going to have a change. But we're dra, drafting these based on the 2010. So, uh, in theory, there'll be some of us that will be up for, some districts will have an election this, this year based on the maps as we draw them today. And then others of us, in theory, like myself, um, probably assuming my district, depending on how this goes, may not be up for election until 2022. But next year, when the new, or when this new census is released, I could hypothetically get redrawn into a district that is in this, in this other cycle. And so I could, in theory, become precluded from being able to rerun again for two years. I would just be out once my at-large time is served. Is that, am I, are you getting, I assure you.
I follow, I follow.
So how does that, how does that, how do you deal with that?
So then this might, I don't know if you would like to.
We'll go ahead.
Okay. I, um, so, um, when you vote on the ordinance, the ordinance will list the districts that will be up for election in 2020 and which districts will be up for election in 2022. And you're right, um, when, in 2021, when the new census data is released, then the city of Oroville will have to redistrict the current districts. And depending on where you live, say that, um, in this, this version, for example, you're in District 4, but over the last 10 years, lots of things have changed. You're not in District 4 anymore. Then if you wanted to run for District 4 again, then you would have to move to District 4.
Okay. So those of us that are in the next election cycle, and there's several, several of us that are here, we're, we're kind of in a little bit in the dark, a little bit, as opposed to those that are in the election cycle coming up.
We're in the dark, yeah.
But then if you, if, well, just using you as an example, so you're up in this election cycle this year. So, and then, so we put you in this 2020 cycle, then, and then you're elected as a, uh, districted councilperson, then, then you're, you're good. You're safe. It's those of us that are on, on the, on the next cycle, I, I think, that would be more problematic. I mean, I'm just saying, these are all kinds of issues. This is a, I just wanted to point that out. I think it's an important dynamic that exists here, that makes it more complicated.
I don't have much to add.
Your mic's off.
I don't have much to add to what the consultant said, other than she's right. You know, you may, you may have to move in there and rerun, but we'll, uh.
Sure, I can do that.
No, I understand that and we'll look at that. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, I just, it's just a dynamic, I think, that just the, just for the public to kind of bubble this up, it's like, wow, there's a lot, you know, to consider.
Mm-hmm, and, yes.
And I think that's why you get into the gerrymandering stuff as well. I think that's why there was a big blow up up in Chico. And I think probably some of these kinds of issues is what created that dynamic. So, anyway.
Certainly, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Is this, uh, process, um, in reference to The Hunger Games at all?
Um, I don't know if those who, uh, drafted this law had, had read The Hunger, Hunger Games yet.
Probably had something to do with the movie, huh? Councilmember Goodson.
So the many, many comments that I have heard are in regards to, we have two councilmen on the dais, dais. We have Art Hatley and Scott Thompson who live like this close. How Art is at large till 22, Scott till 2020. Help, help me out here. I mean, that's, that's.
I don't know where any of, um, any of the council members live. And I think that to get the best districts possible, um, it's maybe good to start with a blank slate and just look at where would be the best, most representative districts for the areas.
So it's not a, it's not a question, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. It's not a question about the district. I mean, they're like this close. So with one being in his position till 22, but voted in at large, do they both start the process over again in 2020 or Art stays in his seat till 22?
Right, okay, I understand your question. Thank you, yes. And, um, I don't know if you have any input. And I, I believe that, um, you know, everyone is guaranteed their seat for the amount of time that they were elected for.
I think I can answer that.
So that's a guarantee.
I can answer that question. I mean, it depends on a lot of it, what the council decides and what districts are up for. But let's just hypothetically suppose that that district is. And we're going to say there's Councilman A and there's Councilperson B. And Councilman A's term is for two more years and Councilman B's term is up. Well, if the council decides that that particular district is a district that will be running in 2020 and Councilman B chooses to run for that district, they can do that. Councilman A can also run and become the district representative. If Councilman A is unsuccessful but still has two years on his term, he will serve out those two years as elected as representing the unrepresented districts until the 2022 election as an at-large member. But Councilman B, who was then elected for that district, will be the district councilperson. So anybody that is elected that has time left to serve will serve out that term. I mean, they will either be the district representative if they choose to run again and essentially they will re-up and get a four-year term. Or if they're unsuccessful in their assigned district, they will serve as the at-large to cover the other districts who don't have a district representative based upon the election.
Oh, so it, it would, so what I hear you saying is that there would not be two city councilpersons in one district?
No, there will be the first, well, there could be, potentially, if that district were to come up. There could be. One would be the district representative that would represent District A.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, but then the other one would be at-large because District C, D, and E may not necessarily have a, a district representative at that time. So the at-large member that was there would represent all of those districts until the next election process in 2022. Provided, just to throw in the interesting caveat and make it more complicated and confusing, we change the lines. I mean, so, uh, because of the 2020 census, because in 2021 it changes again. So that's, uh, you know, you could start the process again.
Well, there can only be seven up here.
There will only be six councilpeople and one at-large elected mayor.
And so let's say hypothetically, Art Hatley and Scott Thompson would remain, then we would have to make sure that there is a district that is left open slash no representation so that the at-large could fill that slot.
Well, there, there would be because through the election process, there would be two vacancies that would come up if Scott, because if Vice Mayor Thompson had to run again, he would have to win that district in order to obtain that seat. Otherwise, he would be out. I mean, if he didn't, if Councilman Hatley won that seat, if he chose to run, then he would be in for the next four years. And then there would be a vacancy created. So it would be, it, you know, we're, the really difficult part about this whole thing is we're trying to predict the future. Um, and I think that the best thing that we're, we can do is get through the process, establish the maps, and that will be, uh, give us at least a better idea. Because this is, you know, looking at the map we had up earlier with the numbers that are up there, it's really confusing when you just start trying to put together 3100 and break it up. Once we get something to look at, I, I think we'll have a lot better idea and we can talk more, um, uh, using better, um, I guess metaphors and examples when we can see, okay, if we have A and B living here, if this happens. I mean, so I think at the, the most interesting public hearings will probably be the ones in, uh, March when we get a map that we can actually look at.
And, and that has accuracy and figures?
It's going to be as accurate as it was tonight. I mean, that's, it's based on, uh, 2010, um, numbers.
Now, I, and, okay, so technically, it has to be based on 2010 figures.
Yes, ma'am.
But we, anybody can draw up a map.
Oh, absolutely.
And with the real, realistic figures. Can we get that map?
Well, you can make your own map. You just have to have, you, what, what she told us earlier was you have to have areas that have 3,000, approximately 3,121 people.
Right.
So you can take, it said, a thick pin and draw a line around it and get 3,121 people roughly. So you, yeah, I mean, there's, there's so many variations of this, as long as you do that. I mean, so that's, I'd say that's going to be the interesting part, when we see how this thing breaks down.
Councilmember Pittman.
Quick question. Quick question. Once we do this map and then next 2020, we'll have to do it all over again. Then after 2020, is there anything that triggers another redraw of maps? Because, and the reason I ask the question, there is a population boom coming to the community. Is there something that triggers, if we get 5,000 more, is that a trigger for a new rap, map redraw?
Um, no. Um, the, the only way that, um, I guess, the only way that would, after you redraw in 2021, then the only thing that would trigger a map redraw was if, for example, you, um, drew it in such a way that violated the federal or California Voting Rights Act. So as long as you draw them, um, as best as possible, following the law as best as possible, then that should not happen, no.
But I believe that you can also, the council could take the action, recognizing if you annexed a, an area of the community where there are 7,500 people, you can say this map no longer meets the needs of the community. And the council can take the action voluntarily, but they're not compelled until after the next census, if I understand. voluntarily, but they're not compelled until after the next census, if I understand that correctly.
Is there any triggers in the law?
Well, I, I don't certainly know the whole breadth of this law, it's very long and complicated, but the one thing that would trigger it, I'm sure, is if we were challenged in some way on how the communities of interest were, were drawn, and then, or things changed and it, that would, that would affect those communities of interest, then that would be a response to a legal challenge, we'd have to look at that, but if you're asking if, if there's anything else that triggers that, like the census itself, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I'm, I'm certainly not trying to be disrespectful, but this is not the first time this has happened, is there anyone who is an actual expert on this?
Is there anyone who's an actual expert?
Yeah, because, well, there's a lot of questions here that nobody knows the answers to.
Um, I, I would certainly say that Karen McDonald is, like, the California expert, um, on the California Voting Rights Act, certainly.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is she going to be here next time, or?
I will ask her, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And one quick, one last plug for public participation, is you can email in, um, your input at districting@cityoforoville.org, and you can get information online again at cityoforoville.org/districting, and of course, give any input that you have tonight as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any speakers on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I do have, it looks like, four public speakers. The first speaker is Mike Brown.
Good evening, Mayor Reynolds, uh, members of the council. I live in the Westdale, Brookdale, Pierpont area, I have a community of interest that is concerned about wildland fire, um, roughly follows the eastern edge of town, all the way from Lower Wyandotte around to the river, that area where the state's responsible for wildland fire. I know full well, we're most threatened as a city there, because of the wildland fuels. So I drew a map, recognized, uh, my neighborhood, and I tried to draw neighborhoods adjacent to where I live, based on what I understand their community of interest might be, so I'm going to share that map with your consultant, and I'll probably share more in the future. Um, it's not like when I got a pizza at Shaky's last night, I watched the sausage get put evenly, the tomato get put evenly, and it get cut in six pieces, my wife and I were in agreement. It's a little more complicated, but we're going to get to do it more than once. Now, I moved into the city from Thermolito, uh, about three years ago, because I saw advantages of being in the city, this I didn't anticipate, though, but I'm the third of five generations that have lived, or are still living here, and historically, I recognized, uh, three neighborhoods when I was a kid, riding my bicycle around the city, within the city limits, following the city fire engines, Dave. Uh, now, I tried to make a map reflecting six communities of interest, um, in three groups of two. I think it's possible, but this is going to be like cutting a pizza in some crazy shapes, and arguing over who gets the sausage and who gets the garlic.
Is my time up?
Thank you.
Our next speaker is the cameraman.
Good evening again, Oroville City Council, uh, boy, what a, what a head-scratcher we have tonight. At first, I could honestly see drawing this map with six districts, if Thermolito was included in this map, and I know it's not part of the city, I've spoken to many residents, there's a whole bunch of issues, from they don't want to be on the city's water, to all sorts of other things, but it's like, and I'm supposed to divide this against six districts with at least 3,121 people in there, but it's kind of hard to do that with the awkward shape of that, and I understand, it's already been explained, I understand what she said to me, but it's like, okay, the airport is here, and it's, it's own little district, and the road is what, you know, 162 is what connects all of this together, but you look at 162 here, and it has zero, so there's zero people there, um, but it's still connected, and then it's also confusing to me, because I've gone to Caltrans, and Caltrans tells me, well, we own 162, not the city of Oroville, so how does that road make, you know, the airport connected to the rest of the city in regards to the district map? So it's kind of confusing for me, and it just seems like to me it'd be easier to divide if there was four councilmembers and one mayor. It's going to be hard for some, because, like, some of these areas have, you know, as little as 200 people, and if you, well, they have a different map, but the map over here, there's only two people in this one corner, so I'm like, you know, it's, it's really going to be hard for people to divide this, and it seems, uh, you know, problematic, and just a final comment, whenever this does get solved, prepare to be, you know, I've dealt with cities with districts and people that don't have districts.
Thank you.
Annie Terry.
I just got to say, this is bureaucracy at its best, it absolutely is. Um, I, I want to make sure I understand something, if 3,121 people are making decisions for each district, and there's six districts, is that right? Then in Sacramento, um, there's a lot more people, in, um, San Francisco, there's a lot more people per square mile, I mean, if you want to talk in, in terms of geography, so they have more than six districts, that each have 3,121 people, or they have, um, is it more people per district, or is it more districts per?
In, in the, great question, in the examples that you gave, um, in Sacramento and San Francisco, they all have more people per district.
Okay, so 3,121 people are going to make a decision about their locality, um, whether or not they work in that district, based on strictly whether or not they live in that district, correct?
So the, the population total, the 3,100 people, it's people who live there, as counted by the census.
Okay, but not all of those are voters, some of those are children, some of those are, could care less who's running for what, so I, I just want to make sure I understand all this stuff, because I'm, I'm, maybe I am plum dumb, I don't know. So theoretically, there could be a district that there's one person running, so they're a shoe-in, what happens to shoe-ins?
Then they are elected.
Automatically, if nobody else is in Linda Draper's district that's running, she's a shoe-in, or the same with Eric Smith, or, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Dave Quintal.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor and Council, um, probably beating my head against this granite here, but that's okay, so California, in all of its infinite wisdom, came up with this voting, uh, act, and, um, it took us, what, 19 years to get to this table here? Uh, we've been able to divert it up until now, it sounds a lot like extortion, but I hate to use that word, but, um, it sounds like we're being extorted in a small community that, as you say, has not asked for this. Um, interesting point on the, so you could have a family with two adults and six kids, and they're, so that's eight persons with two votes, or two retirees living in one house, getting two people, two votes, so it's somewhat disproportional, um, by neighborhoods. Um, I, I think we're drawing a line in the sand here, for a town that doesn't need lines drawn in the sand, I understand we have no choice here, but, um, you know, I just don't, I don't see them breaking up a community, you're breaking up this community into, into portions, and everybody's trying to grab a piece of the pie, or the pizza, I guess. Um, so my, my, I guess my comment is, um, my community of interest, if I'm going to propose one, is going to be, it's going to encompass all the city limits, and we'll call that my community.
And the last blue speaker card I have for this item is for Bill Spear.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, um, you know, it's, um, the Voters' Right Act, it seems like it's having the opposite effect of what it's saying, that it's wanting to do, give , uh, the voters rights, it's going to actually take away voters' rights, we obviously have issues with our, our boundaries of our, our city, um, and there's been, people in the city of Oroville have been not able to vote already, issues that we need to fix, um, there's not enough time to fix it, the, uh, the very act that's supposed to make it, uh, fair for people is making it unfair. I keep hearing that we don't have options, well, there, there are options, you could fight it, or you could write a letter, throw ourselves on the mercy of the court, we're going to do it, we got a plan to do it, but it's going to be next year, after we have better information. List the reasons why we can't rush it and get it done, because we don't want to disenfranchise the voters of, um, of our city. The plan that we have to orient, to, to supplement into, uh, not the right word, but that we're going to fix our boundaries, that here's our plan for doing our annexations, here's our plan for, uh, doing it in a right, that it's not going to, um, violate the rights of other voters, um, we want to, we want to comply, we realize it's the law, and here's our process that we're going through, and if they want to take us to court, we'll put our case out there and say, this is why we didn't do it, we want to do it, and, and, and that is a way forward that would be fair for the people that are going to run for, for office, and for the, the people that have, you know, why throw the, everybody into such confusion? It, either way, you're going to probably wind up in court, because somebody's not going to be happy about something, but there, there are options, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that was the last blue card I had.
Councilmember Smith would like to speak.
Just to ask our attorney, so if, if we were to do something that was proposed just a moment ago, what would be the potential legal cost to, that we would subject the city to, to go down that path? Just, just to kind of vet that out a little bit.
If, if we were to fight the, the conversion.
Right, yeah, just give us kind of a snapshot of that, what that might look like.
It's going to be, I, I can't really tell you how much, and it's going to be very mu, it's going to be a lot of fees, and we're going to, we're going to see a huge lawsuit.
Just like a shoot for the stars, I guess.
I mean.
I think, I think the worst-case scenario that, that people are aware of right now is one community spent a million dollars and still did this, and I'm aware of some of that, I just wanted to hear from you, you're the expert.
Millions, yes, millions is the, is the answer, and more.
Yeah, and what would be our potential, uh, of prevailing, or what's the possibility, who's prevailed thus far that has attempted to fight it?
Yeah, no one, and, uh, and we'd have very, we, it's very likely we would lose.
Councilmember Pittman?
And I understand the point, I'm just asking the possibility that i- if any other city has asked for a time delay until the 2020 census is done, I'd be curious if any cities asked that, I don't know if have, but, uh, could we, could we find that out?
We certainly can.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Okay, if there are no other comments from the dais, we are moving on to regular business, thank you for your.
If I, if I may, my apologies, um, in creating potential draft maps, I wonder if there is any general guideline from the council in terms of, um, where, you know, general direction of following certain guidelines, for example, I heard Councilmember Pittman say, you know, looking at the map, and I see the major roads, those sort of feel like natural, natural boundaries, potentially, is there any further direction of that kind that I should follow in creating draft maps?
Couple items, one would be, as I said, the river, the major roadways, the railroad tracks, because that helps to divide our community, um, drainage basins are also ways that people know if you're living on one side or the other of a drainage basin, um, geographic and physical features, um, and I only speak to this because I'm the former fire chief of the town, and I have an imprinted map of almost every detail of this town, I could ridic, ridiculously tell you where all the water mains are in this town, which that's trivia beyond, but the difficulty's going to be, when we do decide it, then you have three different water purveyors, which are water, two water districts, the county recorder's office, or county clerk is about ready to go throw a rock at us real quick when we ask, ask her to prepare this by the election time, which doesn't seem to be possible, uh, instead of one ballot for Oroville, she's going to have to create seven, one at-large and six other specials, and all the lighting and landscape maintenance districts inside those, and school districts, I just like, oof.
Yes.
And I hate to say this, but I, frankly, the taxpayer's getting ripped off here.
Creating all the, um, all of the precincts and ballot types is certainly not an enviable task, and I have the most recent, um, precincts that were used in the general 2018 election, and, um, we can also take a look at those and follow those as closely as possible, if that is the wish of the council as well, might make things a little easier for them when they're doing the precincts. We can, yes, they don't always follow census geography, and we can do our best. Um, I'm sorry, off the top of my head, I don't know how many precincts there are in Oroville.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, moving on to regular business, item number eight, Develop Impact Fee Study Update.
Mayor, Council, thank you for having me follow that discussion. Um, we are, uh, by state law, required to update our Development Impact Fee Study every five years, if we want to charge development impact fees, um, we are recommending that we use the same firm we used in 2015, the fees were adopted in April, um, through that process, uh, council can decide to look at different fees, they can decide to, uh, change fees, but they have to be based on the impact generated by a specific type of development. The cost of this study is allocated to those impact fees, it will not come out of the general fund, uh, as you see in the memo, uh, the proposed cost is 63,500, and we've recommended 68,500, both to cover staff costs, and, uh, assuming we'll have the consultant up, uh, uh, for more trips, so that, that's the request, again, to continue to charge development impact fees, we must do this study, happy to answer questions.
Do we have any speakers on this?
I do not have any blue speaker cards on this item.
Is there anyone on the dais that wishes to speak? Looking for a motion.
I move that, mm, I move that, uh, and recommend the signing of a contract with Wilden Consulting to update the Development Impact Fee Study in the amount of $68,500.
I'll second that.
Moving on to item number nine, Letter of Support for $1 Billion Budget Requests for Disaster Housing Relief and Recovery.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, this item is in front of you for your consideration of a letter of support for a $1 billion budget request. request to the state and to the governor's budget this coming year. The initial budget is out, but the mayor vice could contain this. So what we're looking for is input if the council is in agreement with the letter that was provided and any changes you would like and if you are interested in sending this forward.
Do we have any speakers on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any blue speaker cards on this item.
Do we have any comments from the dais? Having none, looking for a motion.
I move that we authorize a letter of support to include $1 billion in the state budget for disaster, housing relief and recovery.
I'll second that.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to reports, discussions. Councilmember Pittman.
Okay, with that letter of support being authorized, I would like to request permission. I'll be attending a conference in the Capitol and I would like to add this letter to the packet to the variety of committees that I'll be attending at the end of March in Washington. So if that would be the pleasure of the council, I'd be happy to include this packet and letter request indicating the need for so many different things.
I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to reports, discussions, correspondence, council announcements and reports. Councilmember Goodson.
I attended the groundwater sustainability board meeting. In addition to that, over the weekend on Saturday, I was a judge at the academic decathlon that's put on by Butte County of Education for aspiring students. And it's, this is my second time judging and it's always an honor and a privilege to be able to impact and to be a participant in the aspirations and the successes of our youth.
Is that it? I mean, great. I wasn't sure if you were done speaking. Councilmember Smith.
So this Saturday at 7:00 at LP, there's going to be a basketball game. The Harlem Wizards versus the school staff and a few extra folks. So it's a fundraiser, so I wanted to just encourage all the public to show up. It's $12 for general admission and I think it's just going to be a lot of fun. If you have children in OCESD, Oroville City Elementary School District, tomorrow, there'll be some of the players. These guys are just phenomenal, amazing, very, very entertaining and they'll be entertaining our kiddos at all of our local schools here in Oroville. And then Saturday at Los Plumas High School, it's the game on and I think, I think we're going to try to school them, but probably the staff and teachers are going to get schooled. So it'll be a lot of fun, just again, encourage you to come out. You can buy tickets online, you can go to OCESD, you can Google OCSD, it'll be the first hit on Google and then you can buy tickets there through the school district and/or through the harlemwizards.com website, I believe. But going to a good cause, support our schools, encourage you to show up and root them on. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith, did you say 7:00? The flyer I have says 6:00.
It's 7:00, the game starts.
Oh.
Yeah, they can double check online and verify that, but I believe it's 7:00. The door's open, but the game starts at 7:00.
Okay.
So show up early. Guarantee a good seat.
Is there anyone else? Okay, is there anyone who wishes to put anything on the future agenda? Administration reports, Ruth?
Yeah, I'd like to let the council know that I went to the annual finance officers conference last week. I took some courses in new accounting standards and legislative updates and I even took a course in public speaking. So it definitely was worth going to. The county of Butte and the city of Chico collaborated and they did a whole course on the wildfire that was very beneficial to maybe other cities that might have a disaster in their future. I thought it was, they did a really good job. And this morning I went to Calpers, I had a little workshop on pre-funding and so it's all starting to sound repetitive, but I did learn a couple of things this morning.
Thank you, Ruth. Tom?
As I've mentioned several times, in the next probably month, we'll have a funding request for the municipal services review, which is a first step in annexing additional property and certainly then talking to council about whether you want to proceed with Thermolito. So that'll be coming to you probably within the next 30 days. And then the mayor, administrator, Leo and I all attended a session on Assembly Bill 430 and I think Oroville was very well received. I don't think that's an understatement.
Thank you. Sam? Bill?
Yesterday afternoon, myself and Mr. DiPaolo attended a meeting with the county and several local providers regarding the MHUs, which are the disaster relief trailers at the various locations, the potential of FEMA donating those. Unfortunately, I have to report to you, that's not very good. We're most likely not going to be able to do that because of the restrictions that FEMA puts on there. What FEMA is suggesting is that the individual that is a victim of the fire would live there for up to 18 months, then potentially a one-year extension. Then if we were to have the trailer or the MHU donated to us, we would be responsible for another year of the individual living in the trailer wherever we put that MHU. So unfortunately, it just doesn't look like that's going to work out, but it did sound like that there might be a possibility of some of these coming through the GSA as surplus property, which we may be able to work that side of it, but this one didn't. So we did attend, but it wasn't really good news for us or for obtaining that property anyway.
Thank you. Leo?
Attending the meetings with both Tom and Bill, but additionally, Mavericks actually submitted today for their use permit for the, for the new truck depot there at Montgomery there in the corner, which is pretty exciting. Additionally, we've had 15 permits pulled, I think I mentioned before, but they've actually broken ground on a couple of the lots out there at Vista de Ora, which is pretty exciting. At the meeting we met with, at Gallagher's meeting, we also spoke with, or I spoke with Bonnie Chu, with D.R. Horton. They're actually engaging into looking into some longer-term entitlement process stuff, which means they're getting more interested in vacant land here, which is very encouraging, as well as they're moving forward with the second phase out there, Linkside Place. Additionally, we have a meeting coming up with Ruddy Creek, they resubmitted a revised map to move for. I think what they're looking to do is get the map revised, approved and to sell the map, but there's a lot of interest in that map as well. It's about 100 lots out there as well. And next Wednesday, going to be attending a meeting at the county for Orchard Crest there, it's the, off of between 10th and, forget the name of the street, Middlehoff, there you go, thank you. And for an expansion of another 97 lots there, we're going to discuss the possibility of maybe getting them to try to do that in the city to city standard since we're looking at annexing that area in the future. So we think that we try to encourage them to do that. So anyway, that's, what's going on the development side, yeah?
Thank you. I'd like to comment on that meeting too with Assemblyman Gallagher. I, you know, a lot of people don't realize that, you know, this meeting was attended by all the surrounding cities and counties and Oroville certainly had the respect and admiration of everyone there and they commented on it heavily. So I would like to congratulate you on your community. So, Chief? Okay, well, with that, that adjourns our meeting. We'll see you on February 18th, 2020 at 5:00 p.m.